We'll call the meeting in order. And we'll start with pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, okay. The roll call, um, start with, uh, Mayor Atkinson.
All here.
Here.
Mr. Merlington. Here's rustling out there, maybe not yet. Uh, Ms. Nowbrockski. Okay, uh, Mr. Nixon.
Here.
And Mr. Conley is here. We have, uh, Mr. Moore here this evening for our playing official. Of course, as always, we have Ms. Falcone and Ms. Johnson in their respective roles. Um, we need to look at the minutes from the, uh, regular meeting October third and approve them if they meet your satisfaction.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Support.
Hearing nine, all favor, please signify with aye. Opposed? Uh, tonight's agenda? Yes.
Can I add something, please? And ask, um, accessory apartments in B two zoning districts.
B two zoning, okay. Reflect, Ms. Nowbrockski, uh, is here at seven oh two. Thank you. Okay, with that amendment, can I get a, um, a motion on that?
I'll support.
Question?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, we have an agenda. Moving on to public comments, those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the meeting that citizens are allowed to address planning commission. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like.
Good evening. So, uh, five two nine zero, Tisdale Avenue, um, sixty-five year resident of the Cedar Springs community. Live here, work here, graduated from here, love our community, excited about the good things that are going on. Here to ask for your consideration on the short-term rentals, um, under other business. Um, I talked with the city manager and she just informed me it's on your, just on your agenda for this evening. I am really, really hoping that you will give this serious consideration. I think there are so many advantages to that. Our family travels all over the country and other countries staying in short-term rentals. And get to know the community, get involved in the communities that we're living in, purchase things within the community. And, um, get a very different feel from communities by living in short-term rentals rather than a hotel. Um, as I, if I understand it correctly, it's not currently allowed in our community. And I think we're really missing the boat on that, um, important option to have here. Um, we, you know, we need guidelines. I'm all about that. And every place we've ever stayed has guidelines and rules and um, I'm, I'm all for that. I hope you'll work with some people on that. I'm sure you guys know what you're doing on that too. Um, so I would ask for your serious consideration on, um, making that available to, um, people that want to come and learn more about Cedar Springs. Thank you.
Other comments from within or without, I see typing happening over there. I'm not sure if that's related to a public comment or not.
So nobody, um, on Zoom is currently, um, wait.
Um, if there's no more public comment, then we'll close the public comment period. And move on to, uh, complex of interest and ex parte communication. Uh, asking members of the planning commission, if any of the above apply, that's your opportunity to say so. Not hearing any? Moving on to public hearings, there's none. Item nine, site plan reviews, none of those. So we're moving on to item ten. I minutes, we're already at item ten. Um, so and A, I think we might slow down a little bit on this, um, proposed sign ordinance.
Maybe I'll start for a minute and then I'll turn it over to you. Um, Mr. Moore and I met a couple of weeks ago. And really went through every section of the current sign ordinance and, um, decided to make some changes. They're in red in your packet. Um, I really liked the part that was eliminated and turned into a table, section thirty-two dot six fifty-eight. Much more easily able to read. I would suggest we do that to more sections in this ordinance. I don't know how you guys feel about tables. Um, I think it's easier for the public to understand.
Can I ask for a point of clarification before we move any deeper into this? There was items, I tried to read this and there were items that were in red. And then there were items that were red and crossed out. And there were items in green and there were items in green that were crossed out. And I wasn't sure where I was as to what's new, what's old, whatever we're adding, getting rid of. Is there a method to that?
So the green is text that has been relocated from one spot in the ordinance to a different spot at the ordinance. That means it used to be there and I'm proposing that we just take that from here and move it over there.
Okay.
That, that's just being completely deleted. And then if it's red and underlined, then that's brand new text that we've added or modified in some way.
Thank you. That'll make this a lot easier for me as we go through it.
I don't think we're finished.
Yeah.
I mean, with the changes, um, I think we have a good start. Another comment that I had, excuse me, to Mr. Moore is twenty-two pages is just way too long. I mean, even starting out, I understand the point of definitions, but definitions of signs. I don't know, maybe we can shorten that a little bit. What's more important to me is a section that said permitted signs and prohibited signs. That's easy, clear. Of the thirty-five definitions, eight of them are prohibited. Put them in two sections. I don't know. That was what I had.
Um, so just kind of walk through some of them. So um, just kind of, we didn't change a lot of it. And honestly, most of, a lot of, so I hear the comments about it being too long. I'm not sure that we can make it a lot shorter. Um, unfortunately, we need to have a lot of definitions. We need to identify specific types of signs and say exactly what they are. Um, how you measure stuff and some of those other, other things that seem intuitive and obvious, we do, in my opinion, have to include them. Um, but we'll certainly moving forward, look to make sure that we're not defining anything that we don't need to or something like that. Um, a couple of things that I want to point out just for kind of clarification on page five. The very bottom of thirty-two dash six fifty-two, um, under prohibited signs, there was a provision there that said for wall signs in the B two district. Uh, box signs are prohibited. You'll see that's deleted. Um, we, so that's not deleted completely from the ordinance, but we did move that uh, provision all the way down to page. Uh, where was I? Twelve, thirteen? So we basically moved it all the way down under the, so we, we created a new section that would govern signs in B two. That was one of the things we talked about at, at the last meeting is there is some confusion over having all of these types of signs that were permitted in B two, which is a very different environment than highway commercial or, or B one or something like that. Um, so we added this new thirty-two six sixty, which is only for the downtown. Um, and then in there is where we, we added that box sign, uh, standard into that section at the very, very end, subsection six. So that's not something that is gone at this point in time, just, just so we're clear on that. Um, the other changes here that we have proposed, um, so we noticed a conflict, uh, sort of conflict under, um, and how temporary signs were dealt with. Um, there was some language that, um, prohibited certain types of temporary signs. Or tempered, prohibited signs, temporary signs didn't comply with your temporary signage section. Your temporary signage section does not require a permit for anything, but then there's other parts of the ordinance that do require a permit for certain types of temporary signs. So it all became way too confusing. Um, so in, in, in attempt to clarify that, um, under subsection on page ten, this is thirty-two six fifty-seven. Um, we added a sentence there that just says no sign listed as a prohibited sign, like a portable sign, for example, uh, shall be used as a temporary sign. And then because the sandwich board is a type of temporary sign, we just moved all the sandwich board stuff into that temporary sign section. It's important to, to, to realize that as this is currently written, the cities not require permits for temporary signs. People can just go put them out there. Um, a lot of communities do require permits for most types of temporary signs. That's something that could be considered moving forward. Um, because it gives you a way to monitor things, right? Because temporary signs often you're talking about something that's out for a month or two weeks or something like that. And as we know, sometimes temporary signs turn into permanent signs, whether, whether we want them to or not. And so sometimes a benefit of, of having a permit for a temporary sign is you have a starting point. And then you can write up right on the permit, your starting day is number fifteenth, your ending day is January fifteenth or December fifteenth, or whatever the date is that we decide. Um, so there are some, some benefits to that. I think that would be something worth considering moving forward is actually requiring a permit for temporary signs. Maybe not like political signs and, and, and stuff like that, but the ones that are used for in the, in the commercial district, I think there, there could be some value to having a permitting process for those. Um, as Darla mentioned, we added a table in thirty-two six fifty-eight for all the residential district signs. It was very simple to do with the regulations themselves are exactly the same. We just put them in a, in a, a different type of format. Um, we've considered doing that and we still might do that with your B one, B three, H C M U and I one district signs in the following section thirty-two dash six fifty-nine. Uh, however, I wanted to talk about that with you a, a little bit first, because this chapter has a lot of nuance in it. And I'm not sure if the, if, you know, how involved you were in sort of preparing this and how, how important it is to kind of keep some of this stuff in here. So we have a lot of kind of very specific provisions that might need to be talked about or might get lost if we try to simplify in a table. Cause if you simplify something, we're going to take out a lot of the text that's currently in here. So for example, under subsection three, well, I mean, we can just scroll right down the list, right? So under subsection two, we have, uh, we, we permit ground sides in subsection one. Then in subsection two, we say, oh, well, you could also have a second ground sign in these circumstances. In subsection three, we have wall signs. Um, and then we say you can have wall signs if it fronts on a street, but then also if it, if it doesn't front on a street in subsection C, uh, you, it could also be at an eighty degree angle to the street, as long as it's within two hundred feet. And so, and then under subsection E, it can't be more than a hundred square feet unless the planning commission grants this waiver under these certain circumstances. So stuff like this is kind of how our sign ordinance balloons out into twenty, whatever pages that it is now. Um, and so before I just kind of went butcher knife here and just like sliced this thing up, I wanted to at least go over some of these items with you. And see if there's any concern with me doing that, or if there's any history that I'm not aware of, because I've only been here for a year and a half now or so. And so I, I, I don't want to go you know, taking good work that you guys have done in the past and getting rid of it. If there's a reason for it that maybe I'm not aware of, or there's a situation that need to be dealing with. So that's kind of where I'm coming from with, with the, the limited nature of some of these changes at this point. I think Darla is right. This is going to take a few iterations to kind of get dialed in and get everybody comfortable with, but I don't want to simplify it to the point where we're making it way, way too restrictive. Um, or simplify it to the point where we're making it so that maybe we're giving away too much. I, I, I don't want the city to, to become overrun with too many signs that are way too big and too bright and everything else, but we obviously want to be able to allow people to advertise their businesses or state whatever opinions and beliefs they have, which is fine. Um, but we want, want to make sure that we're kind of hitting that, that, that sweet spot between, you know, some regulation, but not.
Yes, I do have a question about, um, oh no, I love, uh, sandwich boards. I was under the impression, now this could have been a few years ago, that it was twenty-five dollars to get a permit for a sandwich board. Is that not still the case? Not?
At one time they had to be a twenty-five dollar fee for any of the sandwich board signs or any of the temporaries. Some of the business people, other people came forward and said the small startup businesses couldn't afford that. So at that time they waived those fees for the temporary signs or the sandwich boards.
And that's part of what makes this confusing. And under the existing temporary signage, um, it, 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 uh, exempts temporary signs under twenty-four feet from permits. Um, but if it's over twenty-four feet, then it needs a permit. Um, but then if you look at, but then it says that your temporary signs have to comply with thirty-two dash six fifty-seven, which is your other temporary sign regulations. When you go back there, it very clearly states that temporary signs shall not require a permit. So now we're back in this like permit or no permit. I mean, so again, if you want it simple and to make Darla's life easier, we can just say no, no, no permit. Um, the only risk there again is that temporary signs can turn into permanent signs if we're not careful. And we don't want to have that.
How would that work with like, aren't our, our boards that we put out before our meeting, sandwich boards?
It means is the city can do whatever it wants.
But I, a lot of sandwich boards are used like in businesses to all of a sudden pop up and do a sale. Yeah. So to me, sometimes I think, think of sandwich, sandwich boards differently as, than I do a temporary sign. I mean, the sandwich board seem more temporary because you're going to pop them back in at the end of the night. But, um, so I don't know is, is if we have to separate them or if we, you know, if they're going to be the same thing or.
Yeah, sandwich boards, I think, you know, generally speaking, I mean, you're right. They're, they're a bit different because you literally put them out in the morning, put them at night. There are some sort of size restrictions that are reasonable to put on them and also make sure that it's not actually blocking, you know, the flow of sidewalk. But then contrasting that with other temporary signs like, uh, banners or something like that, where somebody might have a banner out for a week or two weeks or a month for a grand opening or something like that. You know, that's also a temporary sign because it's only intended to stay there for a short period of time versus something that's going to sit there for twenty years. Figure out a daily sign versus a perhaps weekly sign versus a permanent foundation and has electricity running to it and everything else are a little bit different.
Yeah, I don't, I personally don't think of sandwich signs as something that's going to be lit up and have electricity going to it. Emma, it could just be me. I don't know. Cause we've only used them for certain things and I've never seen them lit up. So.
Yeah, and they're normally not, um, I mean, like I said, I mean, usually they're used exactly like the city is right now. Put it out during the day, take it in at night when your business is closed and you're done. But I mean, we, you know, you have, we have seen sandwich board signs that are pretty big, you know, here and there. Um, they're usually not, but some, to me, again, signs are really hard because people are really creative and they're really good at figuring out how to circumvent whatever language we put in place here in order to advertise your business, which I'm all for advertising the businesses, but it makes signs are one of the most difficult things that we do and how to deal with them.
I do kind of see where Ms. Darla is coming from with possibly removing all the, um, definitions and stuff. Um, I do kind of understand that, like getting rid of some of this stuff and with you thinning it down and stuff. One thing that I do want to make sure is that like the banner signs, that is a big thing. And making sure that if we do put a, uh, specified, um, amount on it. And we give them a certain amount of time that we then, I know that would probably be Ms. Darla following up on it. We have them take it down. Cause that's the biggest thing. And I've seen that time and time again, because those just don't look good. And the banner sign here, I don't like the way this definition says, because it talks about paper, cloth, uh, nylon, uh, non-rigid. We could just say canvas and you know, because paper, that wouldn't, that would not look good in Michigan weather at all.
Or cloth.
Yeah, I mean, we could, um, I mean, it's, it's something where we have to be you know, typically canvas, I mean, we've seen them made out of other stuff. And again, people are really creative. And so if we say, oh, banner sign is not allowed, define banner sign as something made of canvas, they'll say, okay, well, we'll print it on a, I don't know, beach towel and hang it up somewhere. And it's a, well, it's not canvas, so it's cool, right? And then we get into that whole, whole argument again. So we have to keep our, our definitions, I think, descriptive. But somewhat general. So we could simplify that and just say canvas or other similar you know, fabric material. But yeah, they're, the sign, the definitions get extremely fussy. And I, I, I don't know, every single sign ordinance that we've read and worked on and dealt with, they all have language like this that is frustrating and written in legalese a little bit. They're difficult to read, but I, I do think there's value in having it written that way for sure.
Well, and most of all, these temporary signs and banners, let's face it, they got thirty days before we legally can prosecute them to take it down. So if they're having a flash sale or a grand opening, then ten, fifteen days or before the thirty days are up, when the code enforcement is citing them, we done. We've lost.
Well, now that's, that's a sale, but what I'm specifically talking about is a new business that comes in and just puts up a canvas that says, you know, uh,
we have thirty days basically before we can do anything to them. Hopefully we can talk to them and they'll have it down. Getting a citation and going court. That's the, the only real hammer we have on.
I'm going to take the tack actually that, uh, to agree with you, I think, Mr. Moore, that we need the, we need the legalese, we need the definitions, we need to have a precise legal definition of what all this means.
Charts. Alongside.
So that they're a little more user friendly to use them, but we still need the supporting language. Um, when we get into the nuance, when we get into the, the nitty gritty of what is and what isn't. Um, it's unfortunate that it, it pulls out to thirty-something pages. And by the way, I was going to ask another question. See lots of municipalities. Is it thirty-something pages the norm? Or is this more than we need? Uh, from the standpoint of a different community.
But it's not not completely crazy. So I mean, what, what you have here is, does not jump out to me as being wild from there are some areas where I think we can simplify it, mostly when we're talking about the actual district specific standards. If we can get some of that stuff down in, in, into tables and find ways to simplify that, I think that'll be helpful. Um, because that's, a, a lot of that stuff is going to be what is most used by staff, whether it's Darla or, or, or me in some instances, it'll be, okay. You're in this zoning district and here's what you can do. You can have a ground sign or a pole sign and you can have a wall sign and you can have one of these and one of these. Keep that part pretty simple. Um, and then the other part, and the one that's always most challenging to, to deal with, honestly, probably is temporary sign, just because there are so many different types of temporary signs. From feather signs, banners, portable signs, which are prohibited, but people put out anyways. Uh, the air dancers, you know, the, the, you know, the inflatable dude guys, um, the signs for like the tax service where there's literally a person like carrying around a sign and dancing around on the sidewalk like in a couple of communities, there's a sign called a human sign, which is that. So there's a, so many different kinds of temporary signs, feather signs. On the list of all the different type of temporary signs, that how do we deal with those? And how do we sort of make that into a workable thing? And then enforce it on, on top of all that is if you're, so a lot of my questions and, or I think input from the planning commission is going to be some of the, some of the lengthier stuff in your commercial districts where we're talking about. So you have a limit of a hundred square feet, which is pretty generous in my opinion. Um, and then we have a bunch of additional language that says, well, you can go over it in these circumstances. If the planning commission agrees with me, we can add and just limit it to a hundred square feet. Um, and do some of those kinds of things that, that could be helpful, I think, just to simplify things a little bit. Um, and then from there, work some more on the temporary signs, but it's, it's going to be I think that always going to be a little bit confusing. But it'll be cold and cumbersome to work with, sometimes just because there's so many types.
I know it's not possible to make it perfect. We know that. And, and, and again, the, the driving force behind this was always, at least from our point of view, I believe, how do we make it work better for the manager and the staff? Um, not to the exclusion of the public need, but how can we make this so that it isn't confusing, so that there's a clear, bright line for just about every situation that comes up? Um, so if you're getting what you need out of that Darla, that's, that's what, if you're getting that, I'm guessing we're probably going to be just fine with it. We can argue minutia. I mean, this, we could do this for hours.
Yeah.
And then we would be all confused at the end and no closer to getting anything done. But I, from what I'm seeing, it sounds like it's kind of what you're doing here. Other questions or comments you want to throw in before we move on to the next item? Did we address everything that you all need at this point?
So, um, so for the next meetings, we'll kind of come back with a, with another iteration of this. Um, we'll leave the track changes on, but as we get farther into this, we'll give you a clean copy alongside of it maybe so you can, if you just want to, because eventually this will probably get so marked up that you're not going to be able to read it very well. So we'll make sure that we give you a clean copy and a redline topic along with it. Uh, we'll continue working, uh, working on it and moving forward.
Thank you. The next thing on the agenda was item ten B, the short-term rentals discussion. So
Yeah, so when Mr. Moore and I met, um, we Googled, what did, what did we, short-term rentals or something in Cedar Springs?
Looked up on, on Airbnb, uh, short-term rentals within the city. I can pull up, so I just stuck in a date of June of next year to see what's available. And there are three uh, places for rent, all within a couple of blocks from, from here, um, on Main Street. So you do have at least three short-term rentals being offered presently in the city. Um, so the, so the challenge, so I guess let me back up a little bit. We're all familiar with short-term rentals, right? Airbnb. Um, so the so the challenge, so I guess let me back up a little bit, we're all familiar with short term rentals, right? Airbnb, VRBO, et cetera. So for the last. Six, seven years and a lot of communities throughout Michigan, usually lake shore communities. Grand Haven, South Haven, Spring Lake, any place that has a lot of inland lakes. Um, you know, there's been a, there's. Been a lot of discussion and a lot of controversy in some cases over the need to regulate short term rentals, cuz what some communities are seeing is you have. Like in Grand Haven or something or Spring Lake, you have single family neighborhoods. Where people are buying the houses and just turning turning it into a full time short term rental where every week there's a new family coming in. Um, some of these are are very nice homes or charging ten thousand a week to stay in these places, so it's it's upsetting. Um, kind of the 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 marketplace in terms of just buying and selling homes and what's affordable. Um, and then also there's concerns in neighborhoods about, hey, we have a new neighbor every week now, like this person has basically turned their home into a hotel room. How and they don't really like it very much. And so as this has has gone on, a lot of communities have sort of looked for a way to identify and regulate short term rentals. Legal framework, the. I understand it is that the short term rentals of houses is basically a commercial use. Um, and so you can regulate them like a commercial use and if you wanna lim- limit them to certain zoning districts, you can do that. Um, and so in a number of communities, they've they've pretty much done that, they've they've permitted them in certain districts, not allowed them in other districts. Um, and then had some sort of regulatory ordinance attached to it that would govern. Uh, how many people can stay there and how many parking spaces you would need and how long they would have to. A minimum or a maximum duration of how long people can stay there. Um, a lot of them require like the rec- like if the owner can't. Isn't local, um, it would require them to have like a registered local agent there to. Address any problems that might come up during somebody's stay. Post, you know, general rules of conduct and things like that. So a lot of communities have sort of taken the step of adopting a short term rental ordinance of some sort. To permit and regulate them within their communities. Which if you do nothing and you don't uh uh and you don't address it at all, that means that it's not allowed. Um, and currently that's where Cedar Springs is at, we don't have anything in our zoning ordinance or anywhere else that addresses short term rentals, so by default, they're disallowed. Um, and other communities have have taken a step to specifically disallow them and say, hey. We period, if you want to stay in our community on a short term basis, go to the hotel down the street or whatever. Um, so that decision is kind of up to you in terms of how you want to to deal with those. Um, there's a lot of different ways that you can permit them, but. Limit their proliferation if that's a concern. Um, in Grand Rapids, I'm not sure if this is still the number, but as of a few years ago, I think they had an overall cap city wide of like two hundred. Short term rental units, so you would have to come in and register every year, I think, and um. And once the person number two hundred and one comes in and says, I want to register this for a short term rental, they would say, sorry, we're full. Try again next year, kind of a thing. You know, I don't know that that is necessary here, but that, you know, there are ways of sort of limiting their their impact and it really kind of depends on on. Challenges that you're currently facing. And um, if you feel like it's worthy of getting into or not, so. Like I said, right now, just based on a very quick search on Airbnb, there are three, they're all on Main Street, they're all, I think, in the B two district. Um. Actually, they're all within about a block of one another. Um. That's, again, you can. Uh, how you feel about them, I think part of this is just to. And for the planning commissions kind of have a discussion about your feelings and should they be permitted, should not be permitted. How do you want to deal with them? I mean, you are. Uh, you do have a hotel in town, um, but that doesn't mean that that's the has to be the only option, so it's really kind of a policy decision first. And from you guys in terms of do you want to allow them or not, then if you do. Now, we can again draft a couple of ordinances to permit and regulate them if that's what you decide to do.
I do like, uh, because the first thing going through my head was the hotel and not taking away. A lot of business from them, so I do like the idea of the cap. And I mean, it's not just the hotel, it's also like we discussed with um. The market and everything like that, so I do like the idea of the cap, um. And I think that they can be a benefit, but all the horror stories that I've heard. Full, uh, what's the word, um. Staying and uh. One of the concerns is that they. Place you are squatting, so there's been all the horror stories of people that, you know, wait. They're squatting in these places. And do we have the? Um. We have the. Legalese and the police force to deal with all this stuff and then. There's just a lot there.
Um, yeah, I mean, so typically, short term rentals are. Not more, the general definition is not more than thirty days or twenty nine days. Staying in a house for more than a month, it's just a regular house, it's a regular rental, long term rental of a house. Um, so the question is, you know, yeah, if if there's concerns about. Less than thirty days, that's when you get into short term rental territory. Um, I, we've done a few of these ordinances and a many of them are kind of. You know, I I don't wanna say self policing, but I mean typically there is an owner who every week after someone. You know, stays there, they go in and they clean the place and it's obviously in the owner's best interest to. Place attractive and looking nice and clean and everything else cuz they want renters and if it's. It's a reputation because just like everything else on the internet, it gets a re- it was reviewed and rated on Airbnb or VRBO, so if it's. Reviewed as being not. Safe or not nice, not clean or not whatever, then, you know, that's gonna be bad for business, so. Some of those items, I think, are 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 manageable, the other major concerns that come up uh with some of these are that they get. You know, used as a party house, for lack of a better word, right? Like the, you know, hey. You know, my buddies are coming into town and we're gonna. Oh, there's maybe some, there's some community event going on. Um, you know, if you're in building, you're there for the for the macro tournament or something like that, and then you're just gonna go. Party and drink and be louder and obnoxious for five days and then boom, we're gone and you can't do anything about. About it and the neighbors are stuck with this sort of revolving door. But there's some of those concerns, I think, are probably. Um. De bans those people now. That's a new rule Airbnb and VRBO has put in that if they've been used as a party house, the person, those people are banned from those apps now. And it was often worse than the reality, but I mean, every community, you know, especially the, again, the big tourist communities. Every single neighborhood has got, you know, horror stories, there's at least one or two of those going on for a few weeks here today and. It's called or something happened, I mean, you just. And the neighbors don't like it and it turns into a, can turn into a political, you know, challenge in those places. Fortunately, here, you know, we have a few. A few to deal with, but. Um, I think, you know, you're in a good position now that you can take hopefully a. If you wanted to permit them, you could have a relatively simple approach with. Registration. Of some inspection perhaps. Um, two hundred to put a limit on the number of them or whatever, you you could do that too. Um, or of course, I mean, if you wanna make it really, really, really simple, you can just not allow them at all, that makes life very simple, but also not very. Accommodating, so. I'm all for allowing them and then but having some regulation on there, not too much. So I think they're important to the community.
Would there be a way that? You could start? A trial period?
What we would do is, so the last one that we did, that was out in um. Adopted yet, so we 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 wrote one for Port Sheldon Township, which is up between Holland and Grand Haven, it's on on the lake shore, they've got probably seventy or eighty of them. Um, what we did there is we wrote a zoning amendment that permitted them by right in certain residential districts. And then along with the zoning amendment. Drafted a regulatory ordinance outside of zoning. Required annual registration, um, a limit on the number of people who could stay in one. Uh, in a bunch of other things. But we could take approach in 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 approach like that where you permit them in certain zones. Um, adopted regulatory ordinance outside of zoning to deal with. The kind of operational issues and then that, um, you could maybe. You could start it off pretty simple, but then because it's a police car ordinance, the process for amending that is. A little bit simpler than it would be for zoning where you have to hold a public hearing by the planning commission recommended to the city. I mean, the city council, it's will have to go through it, it's process of amending ordinance, but I think it would be. Able to respond a little bit quicker than if we're doing it inside of zoning, I think enforcement is easier. The from a zoning perspective too. So there there is kind of a way, I think, that would work. Um, as 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 far as that's concerned, I don't. Part of it is just gonna be working with you guys on the level of. Regulations you're comfortable with, um.
Do you have a concern, even though I I'm looking at this list here, um, that all these on Main Street, right, that that might be up for consideration for Airbnb? We already have a rental shortage, uh, a housing shortage for for families, especially affordable. And so if if we just. Don't take some time and really think this through, we're we're gonna possibly cripple those. Families even more by allowing without some real serious consideration to those regulations. I'm I I I love Airbnbs, I really do, but at the same time, I love them in the cities. You know, when you're going to for a specific purpose and and that we already have three here and the hotel. How much are we going to permit and again, are they all gonna be on Main Street or are they, I know that there there were some that were. Peppered throughout our residential zones as well. I had a friend come in town, um, and she is allergic to cats, so she chose to stay at one that was in a residential district that I didn't even know was. Was there, so. I guess that's just, like I said, I I. I'm kind of on the fence about it.
I I'm glad you said that, I'm I was kind of waiting to see if anyone else was gonna bring up that point, um. Cuz I concur, I'm going to be staying at a at a VRBO in Florida in December. I mean, I I completely understand the utility of them, um, but I would wanna weigh heavily. We're landlocked, we don't have any other land to build housing on, yet we have a huge housing demand that's unmet. So every house that we take off the market. Or people to actually live in to use as a hotel exacerbates that issue. Um, so that I'm. But as I said, I'm conflicted, I'm not trying to come down one way or the other on this, I'd like some time to think about it and get some more information on that.
Well, and that's why I suggested the cap. You know, putting the cap on it because that's actually. You know, that kind of puts a stop to, you know, there's twenty five people out there that just. That's what they do, well, if we put a cap on it, say, well, there's five. Community or three.
Right, so. Yeah, I'm again, I'm not making a decision cuz I don't get to make that decision, but I. Uh, and I know we're not, we're not voting on anything tonight, but I'd like to have more discussion on it before we move forward. Um, and have chance to think about it. There, do you, do you have any information, Mr. Moore, on? Uh, what we know about the lake shore communities, we know about, you know, how that is a real issue, that now you have party communities. Kind of kind of like the, you know. Big parts of East Lansing are not residential anymore, it's places where the college kids live, it, we get that, that's kind of what you expect in those places. Small suburban Cat County communities like ours. You have a feel for the ones that you know about which allow it, which don't, what kind of problems they have?
Full permits them as a special use. Think there's just one in that community, maybe, I think they've approved two, I'm not sure that they're both still used for that purpose. Um, permitted. But they've they've approved two as special use, I don't like the special use process, but you could in theory do that. Um, Greenville does not have anything, um. Building had nothing until a few months ago, they adopted a. Short term rental ordinance, very similar to what we're proposing here, that we wrote for them. Um, they had, they're in about the same position as you, they had, I think, two of them, um. Weren't near the downtown, they were just in the in single family homes in the in the neighborhoods, um, and I think they've had two applications. Who else? I don't know what Ionia does, I can check with them. Um. Brockford, I'm sure has some, I don't know how the how they deal with them, I'm gonna have to ask, ask them as well. So, yeah, I mean, they're, the ones that we've dealt with that are similar to you. Have about the same numbers, not, there's not a lot, so we're not talking about seventy of them or something, we might be talking at most five.
That's what would make the assumption that again, there's only. I mean, there are certain times of the year that we we have something here that where it makes sense to stay in Cedar Springs and why someone might wanna do that, but. Honestly, this is not a giant tourist attraction, you know. Um, there's no amusement park outside that I noticed or anything like that, so at certain point, you know, I. Said I was conflicted, the market will bear what the market will bear. If you if you put, if you put your house out there and you get two weekends a year, well, that ain't cover your taxes. So, I mean. So, duh, I need more time to think.
Not to further uh complicate the discussion, but there has been. Off and on pending in Lansing, some legislation that would basically preempt you authority to regulate them at all. I don't, I'm not confident that's gonna go anywhere. Um, but that has been, that's been hanging out there for, again, probably five years or so now, and that's something that we've been. Talking as an of as we've worked with communities on these moving forward too.
Other questions or comments?
I think we're, we need to be receptive and look at this. But yet somewhat, you know, they're all rental units, bottom line, so. You have a party house, we we don't have a an attraction here like Spring Lake or some of the others. That, you know, we would have several, it's just passing people in the community from working here or whatever, so. I think we're, we should at least look at it. Maybe cap it at five or ten. Graphic will bear what.
I I mean, again, I the. If you're selling your house, selling your house, if you're selling the experience online. That means curb appeal is a huge part of it, you gotta make it look good to the customer to pick it, which is again. If I if I haven't confused anyone any more than I confused myself, you know, both sides of this issue, then then uh I. I could totally see each side here. Okay. Um, item C, quadplex and R one zoning district.
My research, um. Of what we know of quadplexes in the city. There are four of them. What I did is went back to the original property card from our assessor. Did we know way back when? That this was gonna be a quadplex? And all four of them right on the property card back in the seventies, fifties, you name it. Right on the property card, we knew it was gonna be a four family apartment. So. Quadplexes in R one zoning are. Conforming?
Correct.
Legal, non-conforming. I don't wanna make a big issue of this. Is there a way that we can? Acknowledge these that we knew when they were built? It's it's residential homes in a residential neighborhood. So there's four families living in this structure, there's a single family living in this structure. Without making a big deal, can we somehow? Without making a big deal, can we somehow change a couple sentences to acknowledge these and move on or?
Can I, can I ask? So obviously we have, but we've had a long list of the legal non-conformers and we have a few more that are coming on tonight. Wasn't, you know, we were not pulled in too deeply into that particular issue that was handled most at the city council level. Um, but, so I don't know what the language of that is relative to the language, uh, you know. Is it applicable to the quadplex issue or not?
I think the difference between the two is that, so the ones that, um, when I started, the previous city manager would give you the, the affidavits that were being put together. Those instances, nobody knew. The city didn't know, the property owners didn't know how it was originally approved or how it was originally built. It was kind of a mystery. And so it's my understanding from reading through those affidavits that basically the city is saying we don't know. Then you may have done this illegally. You may have done this legally. We don't know. We don't have any record of you being approved to have two units or however many bedrooms or anything else. So tell us what you have. You will accept that as kind of our baseline. This is what you are right now. And we'll sort of bless what you currently have, but understand that you cannot further make this any larger or expand it or anything else. That's kind of the basis for, um, all these other ones that, that you've been doing over the years. So I think the distinction between that in these quadplexes is that according to these property records, the city has all, always known that these, they were approved as fourplexes. So these are definite, they're still non-conforming. But they are, seems pretty clear to be legally non-conforming. And so there isn't really any question in terms of city has no desire or business to go, you know, try to take any kind of enforcement action against any of them because as long as they're being utilized in a way that's consistent with their original approval, then they're fine. And in my opinion, we don't, don't need to do anything. Um, the ones that are, that we've been dealing with currently with those affidavits. And those are ones that you don't have to deal with either, but I think from an enforcement perspective, it gives you a baseline of knowing where you're at right now. So you know that and you have a date on it. And so that in ten years, if someone notices, hey, that used to be a two-unit, why is there eight cars there? And all of a sudden it's a three-unit or a four-unit, you can go back and say, hold on, you acknowledged back in twenty-twenty-two. This was a two-unit building with two bedrooms each. Now you're a three-unit bedroom that, or whatever. Then you can say you have increased this. You are unlawful and you have to fix it or go back and cure. So there's, that's kind of the, the distinction that I see between the two.
When I ask a follow-up question and then I might call him a section because obviously you've been a big part of all this. So, um, what is, how did this come to our attention? What is the pending issue that we're trying to address? Cause I'm not clear on that. Just that you discovered them or?
Or enforcer said, here's the list that the previous manager created. He took care of this one. These are next on the list. Quadplex was next. B2 is next.
I think that, um, but the city manager is worried about is getting into another bog down that we had, that like we had before. Um, something established. So you can say, we knew at this time that these were, that this was, this was this. So then there is a moment in time established, even that's on, even though it's on the property card. I think you want it written in stone, don't you? Kinda like what, you know, let's make a definition here so that we don't have to. So like ten years from now, if a new city manager comes and decides to look into it, um, who knows what they might want to do. So I think that's what we're looking, looking at now. Um, so I, is there a way for us to, to specify or, I mean, they're the ones that are there, but we don't want any new ones.
Right. I mean, so everyone, so these, these existing buildings that we know about that were ostensibly approved as like a four-unit building. Um, as long as, I mean, people are always, whether we like it or not, are going to be doing stuff inside their home. They're splitting them up or doing something that we don't know about. They're not gonna tell the city. So I guess there's, there's two options is one is to, you know, consider these, you know, as they are and say, this has always been a complex. It's been that way since nineteen seventy-eight or whatever. Um, and that's, that, that's our baseline and it's always going to be our, our baseline moving forward. Um, the alternative I suppose would be to have them sign that affidavit. We have to modify it a little bit to say that, you know, we understand that you were approved as it, as this, and we're not disputing any of that, but basically putting them on notice that this is still non-conforming. You know, the ordinance was changed or maybe this could have been approved before there was even a zoning ordinance at all in the city, for all we know, probably was. Um, but now we have a zoning ordinance. It doesn't allow these in the city, you know, so you're not able to expand. You're not able to add bedrooms. You're not able to intensify or add units or do anything like that to your building. So just, just they, having them acknowledge it, they understand that.
Just understanding that it. If we do it uh, now with the fourplexes, it's, it's for benefit of both sides. Not just our, our benefit. It's for benefit of both sides. So we say it is written down. There's not a question.
Who about this from day one?
Yep. Is there a potential issue with, with again, the whole issue of one of them burns down and then can they rebuild? Is that also in question or?
I mean, yeah. And so that's, that is in, well, it's in question, but it's not any different. So whether or not they were built legally or they were built illegally, the fact remains that they are not lawful right now. And so irrespective of how they were non-conforming, whether they became that way by an action of the city or by an action of the property owner. The fact is, is that they're not conforming now. So if one of those fourplexes burns at the ground, they're not gonna be able to put it back. They're only going to be able to put back something that's permitted in that district right now. So that's the case for a legal non-conformity or for a illegal non-conformity or one of these sort of mysterious ones that we don't know. You know, when they, when they did anything or whether or not it was ever legal in the first place. I mean, that, that's always an issue. Um, that doesn't change, I think, in this case. So it's just something of. And I think part of it is just this ongoing sort of discussion, trying to get the property owners to understand what all of this means. Like we're not picking on you. We're not coming after you. We're not telling you to have to take your building now, but just understand like that right now is not currently something that we would otherwise allow. You can, you, you can have it for forever as long as you maintain it and everything.
Nada on cue.
Yeah.
What we do for you at this point. That's why I, I do not.
Well, I guess I, my question is, do you care one way or another? If the city has them sign something or acknowledge that they're legal, non-conforming?
Does anyone have a problem with the city codifying that this is what it is in, in a, in a way that's, that keeps it, keeps the status quo? Paul?
I think the property card kind of explains it. It was built and designated as a triplex. So that right in itself forming or non-conforming, it was allowed to be built. So I'm, I don't have a problem with, you know, the unlawful, non-conforming, or whatever we want to put it to allow them to retain it or, or stay there. Somebody else decides to change it.
The lover from the city to them just documenting it, like not, not something they need to sign and acknowledge? Reported or something?
The galley? Um, ladies, I know that you're, um, you have different properties that in, that was in, you guys were involved in the last section that we did of this. How do you feel about this? Yeah.
I know that one of the goals my dad wants to for the people, well, so the recording.
Uh, one of the goals that the previous city manager had was once we established and identified these properties, he was going to document it in different venues, not just this one. So historically it could be found and confirmed through other venues. So I think that was the other part of this, not just in as far as these went, um, they were clearly identified as intentional in, from their beginning, you know, so. Yeah, yeah. Would you you know, if you got a letter or if we were trying to make sure everything was good with documentation, would you feel put out by that?
Well, I guess, um, when the differences were trying to be established from the other properties versus the quadplexes because they were intentional in their conception. I don't know that I don't know whether they realize that if you're saying that if it burns down, you can't rebuild it. Um, is something that they're aware of because of how they started, right? They, they're legal, non-conforming now, but there was a difference in his definition of that. So if that helps.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I mean, and that's, um, that seemed to be a, a hole in there of best we could acknowledge you, but you can't put that there again. If it burns down, that's, I mean, that's it's just basically saying, well, we're not coming after you, but we don't actually, um, intend to defend your right to have this here if it's damaged. Um, so I've just, I
Need to be clarified.
Yeah. I'm not sure. I'm not sure where, what we're giving them.
And I do think if something might have been appropriate when it was first made, doesn't mean it's appropriate with the plans we have for the city now. And I think they need to those owners, I mean, no offense to what they're trying to do, but make sure that they're aware of that too. You know, I mean, we're upgrading, modernizing your city and we want to make sure that we have a good presence as well and upkeep. I know that's not the whole thing, but I do feel that we have something in there that talks about that, or at least an awareness for those owners could be vitally important for them and us.
So Chandel's comment earlier, though, we have a shortage of apartments. If this quadplex happens to burn down tonight and we don't allow it to be rebuilt as a quadplex, are we not aspirating the shortage of apartments? I mean, why would?
On the other side of town here with addition of properties going in. So I mean.
In the whole city.
So I, I guess the question is, are you coming to us with the, with the question of can we rezone? Or can we change our, our zoning ordinance to allow for quadplexes in these situations? To allow limited quadplexes in these situations to make them legal? I mean, that's a different question, it feels like to me.
It's something that, that would make them conforming, right? So if you, if you either rezone the properties or amended whatever zoning district that is to allow quadplexes either throughout or in certain circumstances that would somehow work for these four properties and, and then affirmatively permitted in that way, then they become conforming. And all of these problems go and then, then it doesn't matter. Then they're conforming. Burns down, they can just put up a new one and continue on, you know, forever if they want to. There are other sort of, I guess legislative solutions that we could explore, but, um, again, if you're looking to, you know, we, we, when it comes to amending the zoning ordinance, you have to be careful if you're rezoning their property because you don't want to just randomly pick out spots in the city and change it to multifamily or something like that.
Yeah, we had a lot of non-conforming uses right now in other, other areas that we haven't made conforming because they were there already. And that, that's probably gonna be a not a good issue.
Alternatively, you would, would also want to be careful with permitting multifamily or, or permitting triplexes and quadplexes in our two throughout the district. Cause then you could have them everywhere and that's probably not what you want either because these are all established sort of single family neighborhood. So there's not, you know, it, so the, there are, there are solutions and there are ways that you could probably come up with it to make it work, but again, it doesn't make the ordinance any simpler for starters. But I mean, that is something that, that, that we could certainly look at would be some sort of approval process to sort of make them conforming at the end of the day. Um, it would probably be through some sort of either like conditional rezoning that the city would initiate or they'd have to offer, I guess, or some kind of a special use process or something else to make them conforming. And then you don't have to worry about the letters and the affidavits and all that. If you just find a way to make them conforming, but.
Yes.
The simple fixes might be just a special land use for these four quadruplex. Non-conforming special use and it stays with the property. Unfortunately, if it burns, they can still rebuild it. But let's face it, the footprint's there. And they were allowed to build it as a pod.
Yeah. I mean, you could come up with a
Simple.
Just permit for with three and four family dwellings in that district. And then have a list of standards that would say that it, you know, only applies to those, you know, buildings built prior to January first, two thousand and two. I don't know, whatever the date is.
Haven't we done that with some other properties already? Has special land use just to, just to clarify now, cause now I'm glad you brought that up. Cause I forgot. Do, we did that in the past. I believe that we have. Okay. Okay. Thank you for the confirmation of that. Yeah, that, that does. We have the documentation, the paperwork and the understanding, the, 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 the conversation's been had and it could be pointed to that this decision was made based upon that.
Okay.
Solution.
Any other questions or concerns? We're fixing the city one piece at a time here. So anything else we can, we can knock off? All right. So item D then, um, uh, meet with the stolen township planning commission.
So I, um, after our last meeting, emailed them Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, seven o'clock. Uh, the township supervisor replied and said, unfortunately that you couldn't get enough people to agree to that date. You know, give them more dates, November and December. Um, now keep in mind hunting season and Thanksgiving.
Holidays.
So how about, um, Tuesday, November twenty-eighth? Or December twelfth or December nineteenth? The evening, seven o'clock here. Any of these dates?
Major conflict for a majority of you. I'll cross it off the list.
I can do any of those three. To my knowledge.
What were the dates again?
November twenty-eighth. Summer twelfth or nineteenth.
Do the twelfth.
How, how is it legally? Like, I mean, are we?
According to our, the four twenty-five agreement that we have a stolen township, we should be meeting with them regularly.
Get that. It's like, for instance, this is a, a noticed meeting when the public is invited and all that. How does that, who, who runs the meeting? Like obviously we're both, um, we're both, uh, you know, how does, how does that work? Because I don't, I don't care. I was curious.
My meetings, um, you, each community would notice it as a special meeting, I guess. Um, the public would be invited because, you know, everyone would be here. So it would be an, an open meeting. Um, and then procedurally, I think, um, you would call a meeting to order and take attendance. Um, they would call their meeting to order and take attendance. And then from there, the only agenda item would just be like discussion of whatever. And then you have a conversation, then each chair would then close the meeting at the end. So we'd have a basic agenda, similar to what you have here. But that's, that's essentially how it, how it works in my experience.
One like that before, so I wasn't, I wasn't sure. All right. You, go ahead.
I think that that is an awesome idea. I think that meeting together is gonna make us a little more cohesive. Um, knowing each other in person for one thing and talking amongst ourselves and looking at the joint effect that we're, we can have on the community and knowing what, what can be built and, um, how it can be built and how we can use, uh, each other's, um, toward making that this whole area a good community. So I just think that we need to foster a new, uh, come, come commitment to make. Come, come commitment to make things better with Solon.
Is, um, the, the township, township supervisor, the, the, the township's planning commissioner chair, is that still? Mister Seavy, is that still Rick Seavy, or?
I don't know, I'm communicating. Oh, Rick Seavy, stolen township planning commission chair.
His cousin.
I think, I think we, I think we'll have no problem making a collaborative environment. I think we, we could totally do this.
So other than, um, Matt not being available December twelfth?
Yeah, the other two days were funny.
All right, I'll see what they say, thank you.
Okay, um, item E, family farm and home, has there been any movement on that, or is that just still moving forward, or just sitting here?
Want to take this one?
So there is movement on it, um, they proposed a site plan. That had this outdoor, temporary outdoor area, basically in their parking lot, in the front of the building. We went through the ordinance in a bunch of different places, and basically, there is not a way in the ordinance for them to put that thing where they wanna, want them to put it. So we told them that, and our suggestion would be to move it off, so it's next to the building, just to the west of the existing building. It looks like they already have some stuff outside there currently, um, and I think that if they do that, we would basically just be able to permit it administratively. As like an accessory structure, um, and it's something that I guess for me, I didn't really want to bring it to you guys, because it's for a few months out of the year. To store, you know, to top soil and. Stuff like that, whereas I don't really feel like we need to come to the planning commission for something like that, so. Um, after talking with them, it sounds like they're going to explore that. Yeah, just move it and get it out of the front yard, because otherwise, we'd be looking at. Sort of variance, or something that's way too much effort for, you know, a four month, five a year temporary. And thing, so, uh, we're optimistic that they're gonna move it, they seem agreeable to the fact that if they can. If we can administratively approve them, we're hoping they'll just move it off to the side of the building and. With it, so that is our current. Add as update on family farm and home.
Okay, um, F, accessory apartments, B two zoning district.
On your computers tonight, when you came, was two pieces of paper. Accessory apartments in the V, V two district is requires a special land use. Well, this comes from my code enforcer, this is what she had found, potentially our. Addresses that have accessory apartments above, and the B two. So to, to clean this up, I guess, if that's what, what we wanna say. For one, this, this just puzzles me, again, these buildings that were built on Main Street with apartments above, when they were built, that's how they were built. How can they not be allowed today, that just?
So, they. Yeah, aren't they, according to what you've highlighted here? So, um. Back into what we were just talking about with the other thing.
These people to fill out a special land use permit today, moving forward?
Situation where. If it's helpful for both parties, the city and the, the, and the person, for us to have. Some way to, uh. Set in stone that yes, we agree that you could continue to do this, that is an option, I'm not sa- I'm not saying that, hey, let's. Bring them all and make a line and do it, because, uh, but it's an option.
Yeah, well, sometimes we see, sometimes we'll see in a zoning ordinance language, it would say. Is permitted as a special use, and it is existing, will be basically considered to be lawful. Well, we, we'd basically treat it as if they already had a special land use permit, even though they don't, you don't have that language in here, unfortunately, but that's what I was looking for.
Exist somehow, but I'm not sure.
Language report, honestly, in your, in your downtown district, if we're talking about accessory apartments on the second floor, a lot of communities permit those by right. Um, cause it, I mean, for the most part, like. I can't think of anything that, and reason why you wouldn't, I mean, maybe you would need a parking spot, but otherwise, but, but I. To me, that's something that can be overcome, and we already have a bunch of flexibility in our parking chapter anyways, so, there's a longer term. Thing to talk about as we look at tweaks to, to, to the zoning ordinance, just allowing stuff like that by right downtown. Might be something worth looking at, instead of going through a special land use permit, we have to pay that big application fee, so you have to hold a public hearing, you gotta have, do a staff report and all this other stuff. Just by right, site plan approval, um, that would make life a lot easier, I think, for. Them and for us, and so that's something that I would. If, as long as it's on the second floor, you know, we don't want the da- the, the main floor of our downtown to be full of, you know, residential use, so we want active. Businesses on our ground floors, but upstairs, I, I would be comfortable with a by right type of approval for that.
Second floor in this less thing we have here.
You draw up something and bring it to us to approval? Be the simple way. They've been there forever.
Don't permit new ones moving forward to also be just permitted by right, so, your basic site plan, they would bring in front of the planning commission for approval, but, um. You wouldn't need the higher standard for a special land use permit that you currently have.
Yeah, the only ones that aren't allowed to have an apartment overhead is the marijuana stores. They're the only ones that aren't allowed.
Is that Michigan, St. Louis, or is that just us?
Sorry, couldn't help myself.
Then I guess we're on to open discussion for issues not on the agenda, uh, correspondence, the twenty twenty-three calendar. Is there anything, I guess if we're still talking about twenty twenty-three calendars, probably nothing new on that, but when, when do we have to approve our twenty twenty-four calendar? Is that next month?
That already.
Last month.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Calendar next month.
Get eighteen minutes ago, I get, you get an hour, that's all you get. Um, how about, uh, upcoming projects, uh, A, I will, I'll never say this correctly, but on again, ho, style properties.
So we've seen trailers and dumpsters around that building, I think they're preparing for the demolition. You know, what they can legally do on them, on their own, so that's good.
And then, uh, but I'll let you, uh, if there anything with the Vanderhide Ford or the Dean's excavating, that we need to know.
Anything from them, Dean excavating, I'm sure they're waiting for their season to slow down before they, they know they've got a ton of paperwork to fill out, so.
And then we have the legal non-conforming that we always do, as they come in, they get documented here. Which, if there's nothing more with that, we'll move on to staff comments. City manager, those first?
Nothing to add, I've been extremely busy, but just chugging along.
Um, city clerk?
I'm, uh, very busy, um, I guess I won't see you before, uh, our next meet, but have a great Thanksgiving and.
Uh, planning commission members?
This sign ordinance is gonna be forever, so, however we can keep it clean.
Kick as much of it back to them and say, we don't know anything about it, let them do the work, so. And you'll shorten the meetings up at least, to do that, and then, you know, again, we're not looming over you, I think that's what we wanna make sure you understand, it's. Come up with the best common sense thing you can possibly do, and we're probably gonna support that, I mean, he might have some problems with it, but. Anyone else have any comments? I think I just made mine. You're pointing at.
Well, it's on the neck, that's the next line.
Well, definitely, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, so, yeah, reported the city council representative.
At, at our last meeting, I was, um, voted in as the mayor, um. So, it's a big learning curve, when you set up there, all of a sudden, you're like the deer in the headlights, um, but, uh, Darla and Rebecca. Are helping me a lot, you know, um. Um, I won't be pointed in any direction, um, so that is, um, why I think that I shouldn't be on this board. Um, but I'm not gonna leave this, this body high and dry, I'll stand until I find a replacement. Um, I just want, want there to be a lot of transparency, and we've heard comments that, um. You know, about us being on the board and, um, different things, we, we still. I still would like there to be a city, city council representative, but I don't, I don't feel like the mayor is the right person. So I know that you, some of you feel the other way, but personally, that's how I feel, but I'm not gonna leave you high and dry. So you, I might end up being here five more months, and then, who knows, you know, so, but, um, you guys, I'm, um, enjoy. Um, working with you, um, you make a lot of good decisions that help us make decisions, um, you know. Kinda working through everything before we have to, so that's very helpful, um, other than that, I think that's all I have to report.
Yep, and let me reiterate, though, um, that we value having a city council member on this board. Uh, not for exercise of, of, in, improper exercise of power, or, or anything like that, we're not talking about that at all. The, the understanding and, and the coordination of what our two boards have to do. Having a city council representative, uh, is just necessary from my point of view, so that we can make that happen. But you will do what you have to do, Mayor.
Thank you.
I was, when I was on the mayor too, I was on here, but if what it did, it gave me a better understanding when the vote came to the council, like. What the planners here wanted to help interpret that, and a better understanding, so. Don't cut yourself short, this is a, this is a big. Big majority of the lifting in the city is done here. Taking our growth forever, so.
Thank you for serving.
You too.
Um, reported the planning consultant, anything else?
Uh, you may have heard there was, um, legislation passed in Lansing this past week that. Uh, precludes basically every local unit of government from regulating utility scale wind, solar, or battery storage facilities. Um, utility scale wind and solar is not something that we would see here in the city limits, you could have. Or could possibly see a battery storage facility at some point in the future, um, those are all large scale projects, fifty megawatts. Or larger, um, for wind and battery, or for solar and battery, a hundred megawatts or larger for, um, wind, so this does not. Uh, affect the work that you did on solar earlier last year, um, but just as you'll probably see articles in the. News about what you can and can't do with wind and solar, so just sort of a. Be aware of that's kind of what was, what, what has happened, and that's, you know, fairly big news for us in planning circles, um. And probably not going to affect, affect you greatly, except for maybe on the battery storage side of things, but. Um, that's it, so it's interesting development.
Right, well, with that, we're adjourned.